Welcome to this meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. It's wonderful to see a full room. We certainly appreciate your contribution to the school district by being here tonight and taking part. And it's seven o'clock and we're going to begin with the pledge allegiance. And the pledge of allegiance is going to be assisted by Owen Colby, Acean Lewis, and Christina Marinova, and Nyla White. Will you please come to the front of the room? Begin when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My sheet did not show your name on the same page, so I missed you when I came down and introduced myself to everybody. Thank you for being here and thank you for leading us in the pledge. We have our...
Yeah.
Are you gonna read it?
I can read it. Makes it easier.
Yeah.
I'll just read it.
Okay, we're gonna go first.
Um, well, we have four students from Edison Elementary School that led us in the pledge of allegiance. Um, and after the pledge, we are okay. Biography. So I'm gonna read the biography. So we have Owen, is it Colby? My name is Owen Colby. I am nine years old and I'm in Miss Mayo's third grade class. I have two sisters. One is older, one is younger. I have a dog and a cat as pets. I want a tarantula or an ant colony, but my mom won't let me have either of them. When I grow up, I want to be a anthropologist. And present. Um, and we have Nyla White. My name is Nyla White. I am nine years old and I'm a third grader in Miss Palm's class. I have two brothers and a sister and many good friends. I love science, reading and writing, basketball and football. My favorite foods are pizza and cookies. When I grow up, I want to be a scientist. My mom is my hero. And we have Christina Marinova. My name is Christina Marinova and I'm in the third grade in Miss Mayo's class at Edison. I love my school, teachers and friends. On Saturday every week, I go to a Bulgarian school in Plymouth where I learn how to read and write Bulgarian. I am bilingual. Last summer, I went to Europe with my dad to visit our family. This summer, our family is coming to visit us. And we have Acean Lewis. My name is Acean Lewis. I am eight years old and I have a little brother, Jalen, uh, Jalen, who is five. We have three dogs named Diesel, Capone, and Rex. We have a cat named Milo, two turtles named Little Bill and Franklin, and a fish named DT. My favorite subject in school is social studies because I can learn about legends and history. My favorite pastime is going swimming, going to Cedar Point to ride the roller coasters, and going to Airtime to jump on the trampoline. I also like to play Fortnite, basketball, and soccer.
Nyla, have you brought anybody with you tonight that you'd like to introduce? And who?
My mom, my dad, my sister, and my brother.
Would you like to come up? It's our policy to take a picture with the family. Would you like to come up and do that? Come on, come on. Christina, have you brought anyone with you? And where's your man? Hi, Mom. Would you like to come up and take a picture?
Say no.
And Acean, you've got quite a crew there. Would you like to introduce them, please?
My dad, my brother, my cousin, and my grandma.
And Owen, the tarantula, right?
Um, my mom, my dad, um, my great-grandma, my Aunt Danielle, um, my sisters, my mom, my dad, so many people.
Welcome all. And is your principal here tonight, or your teacher? And your principal? Well, would you come on up here and we're gonna take a picture with the Board of Education, okay, to commemorate the evening? And we've got some certificates for you, so come on, follow me. Go ahead and sit in these chairs. Thank you very much for coming here. Christina? Thank you very much for coming here. Christina? Yours. Your certificate. Your certificate. Your family's are certainly welcome to stay for the evening, but we understand if you have other things going on. Thank you very much for coming here this evening. Ms. Hines, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Here.
Dr. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Hines, present. Mr. Neil Dixku. Ms. Madell?
I'm here.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
We have six and one excuse.
Thank you. In biquorum, the next issue on the agenda this evening is item 285.19, recognitions and presentations. We have two tonight. Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would like to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Standards, Learning, and Innovation, Mrs. Jen Curry, who will introduce our persons introducing her folks.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. At this time, I am pleased to introduce Nicole Moore, who's our Director of Special Education, who will present the Yes, I Can Award winners this evening.
Each year, the Michigan Council for Exceptional Children receives numerous nominations from across the state of dedicated educators who share their extraordinary accomplishments of their students in hopes that their students will win the Yes, I Can Award. This evening, I have the honor and privilege of sharing that Wayne Westland not only had not one, not two, but three state winners for the Michigan Yes, I Can Awards for 2019. So I will share with you, this is a very special award, the, and the organization receives nominations from all the way as north as the U.P. Um, and Michigan, excuse me, Wayne County represented very well this time, this year. So each winner received a one-night hotel stay at the Amway Grand, gifts, a plaque, I know one of our winners brought his plaque this evening, honors and recognition at the ceremony, and a reception in their honor. So without further delay, I would like to introduce our three local winners to you this evening. We have some Wayne Westland swag for them as well, we have a swag bag, but, and they would like to share about their experience briefly with you. Timothy Burry. Tim? Timothy is a student in our post-high school program, and he was recognized for his accomplishments in transition.
I'm thankful for coming out tonight to getting awarded again for the, for this award. I don't have my plaque, I forgot about it, but it's okay. I like to recognize that for helping me receive this award is my parents, my mom, Lynn J. Hoffman, and my non-dad, Dallas Walton, and my, and my aunt Christine, um, and my cousin Emma, and my cousin Molly, and my, and my non-mom, Jane, and my boss, Mr. Mike, as well. He's not here, but just kinda hoping he would come. And, and that's about it.
Our next winner is...
Ms. Moore, we have an award for Tim that we'd like him to...
Timothy? Do you want, do you want him to come down front?
Yes. Tim, I just wanna say congratulations and well done. This award recognition presented to Timothy Burry by the Wayne Westland Board of Education recognizes your accomplishment of winning the Michigan Council for Exceptional Children Yes, I Can Award. Your efforts to excel are recognized, and we look forward to seeing you achieve your highest potential.
All right, Ms. Johnson's coming to take a picture. Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you.
Lucas? Lucas is also a post-high school student, and he will share with you about his job. He actually works here at the Cent, at the Board of, Board of Ed, and we see him every day. You wanna share?
Yes. You know about that. So, so I've been, so I have been working here at the, here at the Board Office and at the, at the Career Tech Center next door for the past four years right now, as of right now. So far, my job I've been doing is my, is job is cleaning, and I've been doing has been delivering packages in mail, as well as also setting up furniture and many other, and many other jobs I've done. It's, and I've, and I've always loved it throughout, throughout I've done it, and it's been a great, great thing I've done, and great thing throughout. It's not, it's not even the first job I've ever done. I've been, I've done a couple of jobs even before this, before this while I was in this program. And it was, and while those ones were good, this one I think absolutely is the best one I have out of all of them. Plus, if it wasn't for me gaining this job and for basically, it's part of the reason of how I got this award. So really, so really, so really, it's a lot. And plus, with other people, and there are other people who were responsible helping me gain this, like my teachers, my parents, my boss who I work, that I work with, who I've worked with for the past four years and onward. And it's, and they helped me very much a lot during it. And I'm just hoping that I continue doing this, and that once I graduate from this program that I will be still working here in the years to come. And that I hope to do. Thank you.
Nice job, Lucas, and, and thank you for, thank you for all your hard work for us.
Yes.
Do you mind if I read your word there to everybody? Can you stand here? This says, Michigan Council for Exceptional Children, Lucas McHenry, 2019, Yes, I Can Award Transition. Lucas, this award of recognition on behalf of all members of the Board of Education says the Wayne Westland Board of Education recognizes your accomplishments of winning the Michigan Council for Exceptional Children Yes, I Can Award, and your efforts to excel are recognized, and we look forward to seeing you achieve your highest potential. And we look forward to seeing you around the office.
So Lucas and Timothy, yes, go ahead. Lucas and Timothy received the award in being recognized for transition there in our post-high school program, which supports students age eighteen to twenty-six. Part of their day is spent on a work site, so Lucas happens to work here, and the other part of their day is actually in the classroom for instruction. So that's what they were honored for, for their work on-site, as well as their accomplishments in the classroom. Next, we have Joshua Price, who is a student at Walker Winter Elementary. Joshua?
Um, I would like to thank everyone who brought me forward to get the award. I've had a lot going on during my life, and I've achieved my goal by proving I could work harder than I could, and I believe I can still do harder, and I will work forward to get, getting my work done and what should be achieved.
You are an outstanding public speaker, and we're so happy to have you here tonight. This award on behalf of the entire Board of Education says this award of recognition is presented to Joshua Price. The Wayne Westland Board of Education recognizes your accomplishment of winning the Michigan Council for Exceptional Children Yes, I Can Award. Your efforts to excel are recognized, and we look forward to seeing you achieve your highest potential, and we know that you will. Congratulations.
Just so you know, Joshua was recognized for his accomplishments in technology. So he uses assistive technology in the classroom with his peers in order to receive information from the teacher. So you can see the, even the device I had around my neck is part of his use of technology when in the classroom. So he's very independent and self-advocates for himself. So I am very proud of these three young men. Just so you know, they delivered speeches in front of hundreds of people on that evening in March in Grand Rapids. So this crowd is nothing to them right now. They appreciate it, but they're used to a large crowd, so, um, thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Whatever work there is in this job, that sure makes it all worthwhile. Congratulations to those families and those winners. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we begin our next presentation around our secondary redesign, I'd like the, the team that is presenting to come up, and as they do, everyone in the audience should have received one of each of four sheets of paper that were out in the front. If you did not receive those four sheets, I'm sure that there will be some coming your way, so that everyone, or feel free to take a moment to go and get them, because they kinda set, well, not kinda, they do actually set the stage for our secondary redesign. So I'll allow folks a moment to come up. And there are two and, or three in particular that show our student achievement data by building, by, and really looking at our secondary schools. And so as you see, the, a couple here that I wanna make sure the board and our, our families out here can see, you have this long sheet here, which is two pages, front and back. Does anybody have those up here? Yeah, you just have your secondary redesign proposal, but do you have your...
No, no. Is it in a pack?
Maybe they were on the way in. There we go. There they come.
Thank you.
So on this data, on this long data sheet, here in the state of Michigan, we take several exams that help us really assess our progress towards proficiency. And as we set the stage for this secondary redesign, I've got a lot of questions lately about, well, why secondary redesign? Why start with secondary? What does this mean for elementary? Uh, you may have people call me and say, you don't care about the elementary schools, you only care about the secondary. I'm like, no, I care about everybody. But we start with secondary for several, several reasons. Part of it is that with the bond effort and with our achievement efforts, everything culminates at high school. And as we look at this data in front of us, this long sheet, one side has language arts, the other side has mathematics, and if you look at the language arts side, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows what it is that they're looking at in front of them. We here want to know how well our students are achieving, how, how well are we moving towards proficiency or towards performance? And as we look at this, you can see third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and eleventh. The reason only those grade levels are there is because those are the only assessed grade levels that we have. And I know our school board has seen this chart several times. We did add a column, so if you see here, you have sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, then you have the nineteen goal, so every school was expected to set a goal for this school year of what they wanted to achieve with M-Step. And then we can see, based on our NWEA MAPS results for winter, what is, it's winter, correct, that we used, uh, what the projection is looking like right now, because we don't want it to be a surprise, we really wanna look and see how well we are projected to grow. And so I wanted you to see this chart first, and so you have English on one side and math on the other. The other chart that we wanted to show you is, we put together something just with secondary three-year trend data. It's one that looks like this, front and back. And as you can see here, we are looking at the proficiency rates for our middle schools for fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen, and we're looking at our total district SAT scores, graduation and dropout rates, chronic absenteeism. If you turn to the back, we look at student gain and loss, as well as enrollment and suspensions, enrollment by ethnicity, and you see that, so that it gives you a frame of reference for suspensions by ethnicity. And so these are the various factors that the state of Michigan does review to assess how well a district or a school is performing. Finally, you have this sheet here, which, we're gonna get to this part, that's why I'm not gonna talk about it, but just look at the back sheet here, and we are looking at the progress on SAT for our high schools. And as you can see here, we did shift from the ACT, which you'll see here in black, to the SAT, which you see down there in green, and that's John Glenn, Wayne Memorial, and then it's comparative with the state averages. So in reviewing this achievement data, it, it showed us that we have work to do, and the team here that we've put together has taken on the challenge of helping to redesign or plant the seeds of redesign for our schools, to really look at what we are going to do moving forward. And so later on in the meeting, if Board members, if there are any questions, we can definitely get to those, but I wanted to set the landscape for what it is that we are expected to do, and you see there, the results are comparable with the state and national average for mathematics and English. Dr. Townsend?
Before he begins, I'm sorry, Mr. President, is there somebody we can call to turn the ventilation system on, or, because it's getting really stuffy and warm in here, and I don't want people passing out on us. So is there somebody we can call? I think they're going. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We're gonna try that one more time. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So we have the privilege and pleasure over the past four months to assemble over forty of our top educators in our district to reimagine the educational experience here in Wayne Westland. You have data sheets in front of you to kinda see trend data over the last three years, to see how our students have been achieving thus far, and when we look at all of our data from student loss to chronic absenteeism, we know that there's an opportunity, a prime opportunity, to revitalize and reimagine the educational experience in Wayne Westland, specifically and particularly at the secondary level. Before I turn it over to our colleagues, if anybody is in the room that served on the secondary redesign team, please wave your hand. We have a handful of folks here this evening, but over forty educators and our crew behind us, these are the leaders of the secondary redesign team. They all serve as co-chairmen of the team, and they're gonna walk you through the process from beginning to end and share with you what we believe a secondary redesign is in Wayne Westland. So without further ado, oh, first, let me also give a huge, major shout-out to my partner, Sherry Grove over there, who held it down through the process to clap it up for Ms. Grove. And also our partners with CBD, who supported us through facilitating the secondary redesign. So I'm gonna turn it over to SRT.
Hi, I'm Bridget Jarvis, and I run the Family Resource Center at John Glenn High School. I'm new to the district this year, and there really couldn't have been a better way to get to know people from across the district than going into this project. get to know people from across the district than going into this project. So why redesign? Wayne Westland Schools needs to transform the secondary experience to ensure every student has a high-quality educational option that aligns with our needs of our community. We are losing an average of 300 students a year and they are going to districts that have programs designed for college and careers. As we redesign, it will align with the K-12 Cradle to Career Initiative and offset our declining enrollment. As you can see, our projected enrollment decreases from 12,000 students to 8,000 in the 23-24 school year. We've recognized that our downward trajectory over the past years affects our ability to compete with surrounding districts, programming, funding, and how we operate as a district. How did we become a team and what did we do? After the December invitation went out, 41 teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, and community members began to work in three subcommittees. Our observation team toured over 25 schools from all over to see the redesign process in action. The model teams researched the difference between models and programs and how other schools are meeting the needs of their students with new innovative programming. The data team researched and reached over 1,000 parents, staff, and students to see what they envisioned as a must-have for our schools. So sorry. We did utilize a portrait of a graduate.
What was the one?
Thought exchange, I can't remember that one, and asked our students, what do you want to be able to do in high school?
Good evening, I'm Heather Nimmergoth and I am a teacher at John Glenn High School. In addition to the surveys and the thought exchange, we were also able to attend a national conference in San Diego. I was one of those lucky members that was able to attend. Out of our team, over 16 different members from the team did attend and there was at least one teacher and one administrator from each secondary building. During this conference, we were able to all visit 10 different sites in San Diego and see firsthand exactly how a school redesign affects the students of the school. We were also able to attend sessions and on the screen you'll see there's some of the different sessions that we were able to attend, but there's also many more. These sessions were presented by students, staff, and administration from all over the country, from east coast to west coast, from Connecticut to California. This trip was beneficial not only for the networking and information that was gathered, but it gelled us as a team. After the first visit, we got on the bus and I vividly remember we were all energized with ideas. We wanted to get started right away. Through this experience, all titles were gone. We got to know each other as people but and not just as the leader or titles that are behind our names. It gives the staff and the administrators that attended a sense of belonging and it enabled us to build relationships. And just like students, if we are people too, if we build those relationships and we have a sense of belonging, we as staff members will stay in the Wayne Westland school district. I truly wish that I had, everyone in this district had a chance to experience what we had a chance to experience. It just wasn't the networking or the information that we are able to gather or the observations, but it was the relationships that we were able to curate amongst each other.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Laidlaw. I teach at Wayne Memorial High School and I'm here to tell you about our data. We gathered information from our stakeholders using digital surveys and honest conversations. This first survey asked our community, what's your portrait of graduate? And this one happened to capture mostly students and teachers' voices and you can see that they felt communication and conflict resolution were the two most important characteristics of a Wayne Westland graduate. Here in another survey, we captured mostly parents and teachers. And again, we see that communication and critical thinking are our two most important characteristics of a Wayne Westland graduate. Our stakeholders have told us that communication skills are very important. Not only do our stakeholders feel that, but the Michigan Department of Education says that college and career-ready students can communicate and collaborate with multiple audiences, various audiences. And some of our community feedback let us know that we as adults may not be communicating with all of our audiences as well as we can. The use of language in class is making a big difference. In order to close those communication gaps, we may need to pay attention to how we use our words. In another survey, we reached over 1,000 students in grades six through 12. We asked two questions, an open-ended question that says, what skills and/or experiences would you like by the end of high school? And I have to say right now publicly that if Peggy Powers were not a part of our team, this data would not have happened. She went through each hand-typed student response by frequency and likeness. And we find that most of our students right now say they want real-world experiences specifically to do with finances and numbers. They also say they want lifelong learning experiences. And in the middle, you can see college preparedness. That's less than 20% of our students said anything about college preparedness. We found that curious because in the same survey, there was a multiple-choice question and it asked, what do you want to be prepared for at the end of high school? And 60% of those respondents said to be prepared for a four-year university, which made us wonder, do they know what that means? Have they been trained to say college? Are we preparing them for college? So we dug into some MySchool access, MySchool data through the state of Michigan and you see this handy trend chart in front of us. It shows Wayne Westland graduates starting the spring of 2011. The first bar has kind of a pinkish color down toward the bottom and then a darker color up top. Pinkish color is how many students enrolled in a two- or a four-year university for the fall semester after graduation. One year later, in 2012, we can still see that some students are continuing to enroll. We're doing a good job. But you also see that light purple color show up and that's the number of students that have dropped out of college. And then the following year, it doubles. And then the following year, there are more and more and more. It's not all bad news. The blue spots that you see, those are, those are our kids that are graduating. They've achieved their goals. They've done a good job. They're going on to advanced education. But the number of our students that have dropped off still surpass those that have achieved their post-secondary goals. We're, we're not preparing our students for college and it's putting them in financial peril early on. They've asked us to have help with their finances straight out the gate and we just helped them accumulate debt right away. They didn't have a chance to explore their own pathways and know what their options were. They just chose college. And maybe we can do better. Great data brings up a lot of questions and now for the first time in a long time, we get to ask the right questions.
Thank you. I need a little assistance here. Good evening, my name is Kevin Didley and I teach at John Glenn. The, one of the first things that we heard from Dr. Holt, she addressed the whole group and she gave us this quote and I embraced it fully. Dream big and then dream bigger. She encourages us all to look at all of the options that are available to us and make the best recommendation that we could. Dream and then go bigger. Find programs and opportunities that are best for our children and our students without being restricted by cost. If we can find what's best, we'll find a way to make it happen. Additionally, while I was, had the opportunity and the pleasure to be in the national conference, I listened to the keynote speaker and he had this to say, we need to act on the sense of urgency that we all know is there. We know it needs to happen. We need to make it happen and act to create the change, whatever that change will be. I took this to heart personally. It kept coming up to me in this whole group that we kept meeting and meeting and meeting. And I think we did a pretty good job.
After all the observations and after all the data collection and after all the discussions, we were able to put our plan or capture our redesign into three different focus areas. The first area is smaller learning communities. The second area is career, college, and life readiness skills. And the last area is supports and resources. The middle?
I'm Louis Salisbury and I go to Tinkum. I'm a senior.
What comes to mind when you hear or think of smaller learning communities in schools?
I think of something like, it's not like a regular high school, but I think of some secondary, something like where you're in a group. You can work as a high school, but you're pretty much trying to get like a career or you're working on college goals, more on life skills than just like schoolwork.
What comes to mind when you hear or think of college?
All right, the first component would be a ninth-grade smaller learning community. From our experiences and observations, ninth grade is a very influential year and lays the foundation for students to be successful during the next three years and beyond. This smaller learning community will aid in transitioning the students from middle school to high school and demonstrate the importance of a college or career-ready pathway. This SLC will connect and help support the socially-emotional competencies. And lastly, most importantly, through this smaller learning community, trust and relationships can be built amongst students and staff. Grades 10 through 12 will be placed in their own smaller learning community, which will be formed amongst the career pathways. The state of Michigan is moving towards guided career pathways. This past December, Michigan released the Michigan Career Development Model, which outlines how to provide all students the necessary knowledge and skills for the success in the career field of their choice and lifelong learning. By being at the forefront of this model, we will be able to move Wayne Westland to a top-10 district in the state. College will still be important, an important pathway as we understand some careers require post-secondary schooling or training. Through students studying their chosen career pathway, they will be exposed to real-world experience, which the data shows the students want. In addition, students will be exposed to all the different career options within that pathway. For example, in a hospital, there's just not a doctor. There's the doctor, there's the nurse, there's the person who delivers the food, there's the mail delivery person, there's the security guard. There are many different types of jobs within the health career field. So by exposing the students to all these different opportunities that they do have, it will make them well-rounded employees and help them understand the organization of their career field. In order to make these two different smaller learning communities successful, we will need to use five different tools or models. The first one would be personalized learning, in which the student will advance through the material at their own pace and proceed to the next level. Also, we will incorporate project-based learning, or PBL, which gives the students the real-world application evidence shows the students want. Students work for an extended period of time to investigate and respond to an engaging and complex question, problem, or challenge. Stack credentials would be when the students will leave Wayne Westland with a credential, badge, certificate, license, et cetera. This will make them more marketable in the job force and if post-secondary plans do not pan out the way the student had planned, they can still fall back on the credential they earned. So that light purple area that Amanda mentioned earlier will get, this will give those students something to fall back on if they do drop out of college or their training that they planned on completing. And lastly, internships and externships. Internships will give the student a real-world experience, hands-on. It will allow the student to do networking outside in the community. They will also be able to earn money and high school credit and the credentials can be tied to externships. Being part of a secondary redesign team, we were able to visit our Career Tech Center. We hope to build upon this gem in our district. We hope to make, add more programs to this program that we currently have. When we were over there, we were able to meet the young lady in the left-hand corner. She was able to program and wire all by herself a video game control, or video controller, video game controller. She spoke about her project very fluently, demonstrating her true interest in her work and learning. We hope that through this plan, more students will be, also be like this student here.
My name is...
We're skipping the video because it didn't format correctly.
What you couldn't see in that photo was the girl, she had a whole box that she inserted this, it's called a raspberry of some sort, and she programmed that whole thing and there's all the buttons. And she literally made her own Xbox controller. And it was fully functional, she programmed it herself, she wired it herself, she flipped that box over, there were more wires inside there. I didn't know what it was going to do, but clearly the screen behind her didn't have a full-built menu. And according to her instructor, this girl doesn't say boo to anybody about anything, but she talked to us for about 10 minutes about this controller, how it worked, and it just demonstrated the amount of pride that she took in what she was doing and the enthusiasm for what, that she had for taking on such a project in this technological idea. Next, we're going to speak about college career and life readiness skills. These are skills employers are looking for and our students need in order to be successful in life. Data shows parents and students are asking for these skills to be taught. These skills were identified as a top priority by both parents and students. Students should be able to regulate their own communication in and for different situations. For example, how one speaks in a work setting versus how they might talk with, just having a conversation with their friends.
Not only will we have to teach the essential skills or navigation skills, we will also have to have a built-in relationship time. This time to build relationships between students and staff needs to be timed specifically set aside to create, shape, and maintain a bond. The bond will then build a culture and community that extends outside of school. Through evidence and conversations with other districts across the nation, it showed us that by placing these students with the same cohort leads to the most successful results. This time will not only allow the staff member to mentor the student, but also mentoring amongst grade levels can also take place. Through experience, we know if a student builds relationships and has a sense of belonging, they will graduate from Wayne Westland and stay in the community when they plan to build a family.
Currently, we're working on restorative practices in the district. We're at the beginning stage in this area. District is currently phasing and training for restorative practices and the district goal is to have all staff trained by the end of next school year. Through observation and school visits, we have found a lot of schools are very heavy on the restorative practices and we just need to enhance what we've already started. Through the use of restorative practices, we will be able to create a community among all staff and students.
Good evening, my name is Dana Dulzo and I teach at Tinkum. The final component of our presentation includes the supports and resources necessary for our proposals. Two essential components to our redesign are the commitment to provide educators the time and professional development they need to master the best practices geared toward student learning. And second, flexibility in both the physical environment and scheduling. I might go back and forth, they're a little out of order. We found two common themes during our school visits and from all our research. They are embedded professional development and flexibility. There are two types of embedded professional development. The first type of embedded professional development is to continue to make use of our instructional coaches, which provides consistent... our instructional coaches, which provides consistent, individualized support for our classroom and teachers throughout the school year. And also to continue to make use of the district content meetings to share and support best practices in the classroom. The second type of embedded professional development is consistent, whole-group professional development occurring at regular intervals throughout the school year. We observed a variety of options for professional development, both outside the school day and within the school through late-start or early-release school days. The embedded professional development schedule can be supported by flexible scheduling for the students. We currently have alternative scheduling for students at Career Tech in Tinkum, and the flexible schedule offers the ability for students to participate in work internships and experiential learning for all of our students. We also have seventh-hour options for students needing credit recovery options during the school year. We need to continue to recognize the great practices we already have in our district and expand on them. With the passage of the bond, we have the opportunity not only to enhance our curriculum, but our physical environment as well, to support cooperative learning groups, project-based instruction, and small learning communities to facilitate the 21st century graduate. As stated on our district website, Wayne Westland Schools, in cooperation with our parents and community, will educate and prepare our students to be knowledgeable, responsible, contributing members of a global society. And we believe in our district.
That concludes the secondary redesign presentation. We are open to questions.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend, and thank you to the whole team for all your work and your presentation this evening. Members of the Board of Education, Mr. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, congratulations to the committee on all your great work. It sounds fantastic. I have a concern or a thought that I had during the presentation. A lot of kids seem to be, you know, waiting till 11th or 12th grade to decide what they're going to do, and some really never decide what they're going to do. For example, are we asking our students at ninth grade to lock in to say, "I'm going to be a welder and that's what I'm going to be," or can a student transition between wanting to be a welder in ninth grade and wanting to be an electrician in 11th grade?
This was a topic in one of our discussions or meetings that we had. Even though we don't have all the planning out currently, we were just supposed to come up with the concept, we did discuss that after a year in a certain career pathway, they would be able to move. Now, the logistics of it and the scheduling of it would have to be looked at further, but that was one of our ideas. Also, we also, you know, Dr. Holt explained that the community is asking, "Why are we starting at the secondary level?" The secondary level down is what's going to build your whole entire educational process. So we got to start up here, and then it needs to filter down to the younger, the lower-grade levels. So as we start up here, then we need to have the middle schools talk about career pathways earlier in sixth, seventh, eighth grade. We also need to have the fifth graders, the fourth graders, visit the Career Tech Center, see what options are out there for them before they make it to middle school. Then they can start investigating their career pathway a little bit deeper.
Okay, thank you.
We had two young scientists in the room earlier this evening, correct? And if we do that at the elementary level and we expose them to some of those entomology, he had a definite path that young man wanted to go into. Let's expose him to it young, but we have to start somewhere and develop a pathway. And then it does trickle down, as Ms. Nemrigus said.
Okay, the next question that I had is, and I've barked about this for years and never gotten anywhere. With the love of video gaming, was there any discussion as to turning our curriculum into video games where they can shoot down subjects? With the technology today, there's got to be something that can be done to, you know, no plane gets shot down until it's the right answer, that kind of thing. So I'm curious about that.
Of course, we'd like to increase technology, but I just did see an article that some schools with eBooks are going back to the regular textbooks because they're not working, having the same impact that a regular textbook is having. So as right now, it may seem like it's a little bit more engaging, but in the long run, are the students truly learning what they're supposed to learn from that engagement curriculum? So...
Other members of the board?
I think there's one other piece to what you're bringing up, Dr. Weaver, and it's the concept within the games of the children being able to replay or kind of restart as they're moving. So one of the reasons that the psychology behind games has become so popular is because as kids progress through the levels, there really isn't as much of a high stake. You don't necessarily make it to the next level, you just start back. But you don't necessarily go back to the beginning of the game. They'll play whatever game it is, then they get to whatever...
Checkpoint.
Checkpoint, thank you. I knew you were... See, I thought you were going to do this. I don't know why I'm doing it. Matter of fact, you go ahead.
We talked about this at length. If you think of, and you're on, and it goes different because what our young people are doing now, they're working on coding. So when we show the young lady who created the Xbox controller or PlayStation controller, it's the concept of coding and that science. But if you think of playing video games, there are objectives that you have to meet to get to the next level. And that's the concept, sort of a personalized learning. You have an opportunity to get to a checkpoint, and if you take a break and you restart back from where you left off the show that you had mastered the content, mastered the subject area. So it's very different from shooting down history words, but it's on a different level, more of personal achievement, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yeah, I want to compliment you on the quality of this report. For those who didn't get a chance to look at it, there's the use of survey, they've done observation, they've read the literature that's available, and it's just, it's really a professional document. When I looked at the 20 pages and I sat down to read it, I had some negative thoughts, but as I got into the reading of it, I was very, very impressed with the quality. And these programs come and they go, and the reason that they do is because they're always a one-shot deal. And everywhere I look in this document, there's room for professional development. That's going to make it a very expensive program to run, and yet, if you do it right, if you do it right, if you bring the people in who have the expertise to bring our staff along, and at the same time to bring our students along when they need it as well, it's going to be expensive, but it's going to be well worth it. I'm really impressed with the amount of professional development that you've built into this program. I sincerely hope that the district can adopt this, that we can move forward, that we can free up the funding to make something like this. It's nothing less than revolutionary. It changes the way that we approach educating our students. I couldn't be more impressed with the work, the focus, the endeavor that you folks have given this whole project. So I thank you. I do have this question, though, and it has to do with money. Have you given any thought to where the resources, the financial resources for the professional development and all of the other resources that are going to need to be purchased? Have you given any thought to where that might be coming from?
Not necessarily to where it will be coming from, but as we think about allocating resources. But we do have a plan of implementation. As you can see, it's a lot of information in that document. You can't do it all at one time. So the goal is to find opportunities to phase it in and a way to structure the budget where you can sustain the programs over time.
Have you put any effort into costing it out?
At the very minimal level, nothing I can speak to factually at the moment, but we do have a plan of implementation that's been proposed on how to phase it in over the next year.
Well, if it's at all doable, I'm behind it 100%.
Yes, sir.
I had a quick question. I sit on the upward-bound Advisory Committee, and I did see the studies showing that usually after the third or fourth year of college, a lot of the kids do drop out, and it is troubling. And a lot of times, too, like with the different mentoring programs, I was thinking about having different people from different colleges, because like, you have to know those tricks of what to do to kind of keep the money going, because the financial aid starts running down, it can be very discouraging. So I definitely like that you brought that out. And like you said, too, the sad part is if they drop out, you have that debt and no degree. So I really definitely appreciate what you guys are doing, even with the financial wellness. I saw a school in UConn, and they had like a real-life day, and all the kids had these different, like, you know, careers. They gave random careers, they had a checkbook, and each pit stop, they had to pay the rent, you know, like real-life experiences. And at the end of the day, they had the budget, and said, "Oh, my gosh, I thought I made a lot of money, but I don't have enough to last." So those are really good, teaching kids real-life experiences. And one question, too, I know they have like the Marshall Plan, where you work with, I know with the state of Michigan, is there a way we can tap into some of those funds to help you guys with that program?
Absolutely, and we have our Career Tech guru here who's going to help us lead us through that in the upcoming year. But yes, we were not able to do the Marshall Plan for this year, but it is on our radar for the upcoming years.
And just let me add on to that, Mr. Buckaloo, as we start looking at the funding of this, it has to do with two things. One is a reallocation of our current resources. The other piece is looking at, we were doing this work in preparation for our application for the Marshall Plan. And then when you look at the various frameworks, what we have right now is a framework. There may or may not be the need, depending on the actual programs that we choose, whether we decide that we want to go new tech, we want to go early-middle college, or we want to go international baccalaureate, or we want it, like whatever it is that as the team continues to work, they decide to move into. There are various ways for funding those initiatives, there are many grants that are available, and a reallocation of resources, and you'd be surprised how actual, affordable it really is for a district of our size. So maintaining our size, not losing as many children, increasing our current proficiencies with our children, and keep and maintaining our children will enable us to fund what it is that we're looking at doing.
Other members of the board? Dr. Townsend, I'd just like to say, and you don't hear this from me very much, because when you're on the Board of Education, you have to always be thinking about the money. It's just our responsibility, and we have to project what we're going to need in years. But I totally agree with Dr. Holt, dream big, then dream bigger. Because we're not going to get where we're going if we are constrained by worrying now how we're going to pay for it. That which is meant to be will come to be, and I, you know, I think everybody looks back at their own experience in school, not just as a teacher, how exciting would it be to be a part of this, but as a student, how exciting would it be? And I agree with Tom Buckaloo, this is very exciting. I'm certainly pleased with the work that you've done, and keep going, we appreciate it very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the citizens' comments portion of our meeting. The citizens' comments will be on agenda items only. If you have a comment on an issue that appears on this evening's agenda, please come forward. We have three minutes to express yourself. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is April Bauer. I'm a teacher at Wayne Memorial High School, and I just was asked on behalf of our staff to read a little comment. "We, the Wayne Memorial staff, are so proud to have had Kevin Weber lead us for the past six years. He has done amazing things for the climate and culture of our building, as well as increasing the rigor. He has focused on district priorities that before they were priorities. Under his leadership, test scores have risen significantly, leading the U.S. News and World Report to name Wayne Memorial one of the best high schools in the U.S. in both 2017 and 2018. We have been outpacing the state's average growth for PSAT to SAT in both evidence-based reading, writing, and math. Our test proficiency levels have been consistently higher in the states for historically underserved populations, Black or African-American, Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and the bottom 30%. Likewise, for the 2017, sorry, 1617 school year, we received recognition for exceeding both the country and state averages for the M-step among our African-American populations, our economically disadvantaged population, and our special-edged population. Additionally, the Mackinac Center has given Wayne a B rating, where a C rating is the average for all public high schools in the state. This year, during English walkthroughs observation with Dr. Townsend, WMHS has even been 100% at Level 3 or 4 for DOK, which has recently become a priority for our district. Clearly, Kevin has been instrumental in making this school a great place in which to work and to learn. Because of this, we request that Kevin Weber stay on as acting principal for Wayne Memorial until we can find a suitable replacement that can fill his shoes and continue the work that he has started, because that is what is best for our students and our staff. We also request that Wayne Memorial staff members be a part of the interview team to ensure that we are hiring someone that we believe can continue the good work that he has started and can help to maintain the climate and culture that he has created for students, staff, parents, and other stakeholders. Earlier this year, we saw the repercussions of not having a full administrative team, which was detrimental to all parties involved, including staff, staff, I'm sorry, staff, students, other administrators, and the Wayne Memorial community at large. If we hire another administrator from within the district, again, we request that shifts not be made until that administrator's current job is also filled, so as not to disrupt the function and flow of elsewhere in our district. We also believe that nobody should be appointed. It's our belief that candidates should go through the typical interview process with a standard interview committee that includes all parties who would normally be present in the hiring of a building administrator. We have been doing great things here at Wayne Memorial, and because we respect Kevin Weber, we also respect his choice. And we want to make sure that we carry on his legacy by maintaining the direction and vision that we have started. In closing, we'd like to say thank you to Kevin Weber for all that he's done for Wayne Memorial High School as a teacher, assistant principal, and most recently as a principal. While the data for our building shows just how effectively he has led us, there are equally many anecdotes that also support the positive impact he has made in our school, our students, our staff, our district, and our community. Though we are confident Kevin will always continue to strengthen our district from whatever role he holds, we can only hope that his new position will be one that capitalizes on his strengths, of which there are many. We also hope that he has been able to act as principal of our building until a replacement has been found for whom WMHS staff members have had a role in selecting, and that no other building are forced to work without a full-time administrative team as a result of our open position. Thank you, and thank you, Kevin.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Megan King. I also work at Wayne Memorial, and I just wanted to make sure you guys know what an amazing person you are getting when you bring Kevin Weber to the board office. I am one of the Galileo leaders for the district. I'll be graduating in just a few weeks. The Galileo Consortium helps develop teacher leaders and has trained over 1,000 teacher leaders over the past 22 years. Unfortunately, our district is leaving this year, so it's pretty special to me that I'm part of that last group. I also attended Oakland University alongside that program, where I just earned my education specialist degree in education leadership. During that time, I spent a lot of time shadowing Kevin Weber as part of my internship, and I have learned so much from him about what it means to be an effective leader. It doesn't mean that people agree with you or even like you, but it does mean that they respect you and that you respect them. Kevin is what we call a servant leader, meaning that he leads for the people instead of for himself. It means that he puts the needs of the students and staff first, and he works tirelessly to improve education. It means he deals with the messy work so that we can focus on the kids. I am so proud to have worked for and with him, and I am grateful for everything that he has taught me, directly and indirectly, through words and through actions. Galileo taught me, some of you might have seen this on my TED Talk, Galileo taught me about the eight habits of a highly effective person. The eighth habit was find your voice and inspire others to find theirs. Kevin, whether you know it or not, you have been an inspiration to us all. Thank you so much, and thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan Statchout, and I'm with the Wayne Westland Veterans Memorial Day Committee. I would just like to thank Dr. Holt, Maria Mittner, the students and staff at William D. Ford Technical Center for all the work they're doing for us for the parade. They're refurbishing some trailers that we had, so some of our older veterans can ride versus having to walk that mile and two tenths, or whatever it is. And to thank the school board for letting us use John Glenn's parking lot to be staging our parade. And in closing, I just have one thing to say. I've used it through my career at work and at home, and it's, if we're not doing anything different today than yesterday, how can we get better? And that applies to everything, every day in our lives. Thank you very much, and everybody have a great day.
I'd like to remind the speakers that this portion of the meeting is reserved for people who have comments on items that appear on the agenda. There will be another portion of the meeting after our... of the meeting after our business where you can talk on any issue that you wish. Thank you. And anybody else that would like to address the board on items appearing on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Karen Rupert. I am a parent of several Wayne Westland students. I have been a parent and I graduated from Wayne Memorial myself. Um, and I just want to say, as far as the Kevin Weber, um, he's been an amazing principal. He has definitely instilled the positive climate and culture that Wayne Westland needs to have. And I think removing him from that before we have a suitable candidate would be detrimental to the entire district because as everyone is saying, you start from the top and you work your way down. We want a positive culture. We want our kids to feel, um, what was the word? A relationship and a bond with our educators and our administrators. And he has definitely gone above and beyond that. And I just want that to be on record that we know and appreciate him for everything he has done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Andy Reisenin. I live in Wayne. I've been in this district my entire life. Sunshine and Rainbows, class of 1980. Passion Elementary, 1988. Stevenson Junior High, class of 91. John Glenn, 94. I taught at Marshall Middle School for three years, starting in 2000. This is my 16th year teaching math at Wayne Memorial. Mr. Buckaloo, you're my 11th grade history teacher. Mrs. Medell, your husband was my 8th grade algebra teacher. This is the only place I know. This is the only place I want to know. My son Devon's going to be a freshman at Wayne next year. I've been looking forward to this since he was born. I began to question my excitement, however, in 2017 when a central office administrator told me he was leaving the district. The fact that he was leaving made me a bit sad. He's a good guy. I liked working with him. But I was immediately concerned when he told me, quote, "Andy, I cannot get out of here fast enough." Earlier this school year, another central office administrator posted on Facebook after unexpected early retirement, quote, "Glad I left when I did. My health was being impacted, as were others who left. Lies were told about why we left. Those lies I'm sure are still being told." I've heard similar stories about some of the other central office administrators who are no longer part of the Wayne Westland team. I'm sure some of you do as well. On Wednesday, Mr. Weber told us he was not going to be a principal at Wayne Memorial next year. He'd be taking a new job in HR at the district level. Sadness, shock, anger, confusion are all emotions that I felt at once. I've known and worked with this man for 15 years, teacher, football coach, mentor, principal, friend. He has guided us to truly amazing accomplishments over the last several years. He has a respect and admiration of his staff and students. He makes Wayne what it is. He makes it a place I am proud to work at. I am proud to be a part of this leadership team. I am proud to be one of Kevin's people. He has been here 15 years, not two, 15. At the last meeting, President Cox said some district employees stay here in spite of the money. That's a true statement. I am one of those people and I've worked with a lot of those people. Why? Because of men like Kevin Weber. Because we work at a place we are proud of. Because we work at a place where we feel part of a family and we love the people we work with. Members of the school board, my mom Laurel served as you do back in the early 90s. I know it's a hard job. I know you make sacrifices that many people do not notice. I know you do not always get all the information that you need to make decisions. Sometimes you only get the information that certain parties want you to have. I have questions for the board. Do you think Mr. Weber truly wants to leave Wayne Memorial? Do you think Wayne Memorial would be a better place to learn, teach, and live without Mr. Weber? Do you think the discontinuity that awaits Wayne High is, next year is worth it? Do you think Wayne, Wayne Westland is a better district with Mr. Weber in his new role? To put it simply, I do not. Kevin Weber's time as a principal of Wayne Memorial has come to an end. I accept that. It's hard, but I do. I am hopeful that we will continue to do great things at Wayne High. I am hopeful that our new leader will bring some fresh ideas that will make us better. But at some point, this becomes about the big picture. Why have we lost so many central office administrators? Why was a decision made to switch things up at Wayne? Why is our new leadership already in place at all of the other secondary schools? What does that mean about the future and the direction of this district? I cannot wait for my son to be a zebra next year. I hope I can say the same thing about my daughter two years from now. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Leon Wallace. I'm a parent here in the Wayne Westland Community District where my children have attended Wayne Memorial High School since Mr. Weber has been principal there. I've had three children come through the district, and while they were at Wayne Memorial, Mr. Weber has been instrumental at leading them through their educational process. He's also been instrumental, instrumental in building positive relationships with students. Anytime I'm on school grounds, I can see Mr. Weber in the hallways at any event, doing whatever needs to be done to make sure that the educational process for our children is being taken care of. As I sat here and listened to he's being removed from the high school, it brought concern. One of my major concerns is if you're moving him, are you going to replace him with somebody who has the equal value and stake that he has for our children? I've known Mr. Kevin Weber since I've been in the district. I used to be an employee with the district, and he and I dialogue often in regards to how we are going to make the achievement gap shorten between our kids. And I can see him doing that each and every single day. And as a parent, that concerns me. Are we doing what's right for kids?
My name is Dan Mills. I am, uh, also a graduate of Sunshine and Rainbows, class of 2001 or some nonsense. Uh, I also graduated from Wayne Memorial in 2014. I just got done at Ferris State, and now I'm, uh, employee of the district. I work in the dual diagnosis room in Tinko. Very loud and proud about that. My dad's been administrator here since the mid 70s. Uh, Tom Buckaloo, uh, your son was a troop leader in my Boy Scout troop. I am a Wayneo. Uh, six of my friends, or six of my brothers and sisters were Wayneos, graduated from Wayne Memorial. I have three nieces in there right now. One of them's in special ed. I would not change my district one bit. Mr. Weber, he was the last football coach that had a winning season in Wayne Memorial. When I look at these four administrators up here, Mr. Weber included, Ambrose, I know they all look these students in the eyes and they care about what they have to say. They know their schedules. They know everything about the students. I can't say that about every administrator or supervisor that's walks through Wayne Westland, and I know we have high turnover. But when we have a real winner and a bunch, we got to keep them. Thank you for your time.
Very welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on agenda items this evening? Anyone? Thank you for your comments, everyone. Seeing that, we'll move to 287.19 to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Medell, support by Walker. Roll call, vote please.
Ms. Medell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Your time's yes. Mr. No excuse, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six?
Item 288.19 on the board's agenda this evening is Board of Education Committee Reports, beginning with the Policy Committee. Vice President Hines. You're up.
Okay, so the summary for the Policy Committee. Um, it was, uh, Melanie Hines, me, Carol Medell, and Dr. Frederick Weaver. Uh, staff present was Dr. Shelley Holt, Jill Simmons, Assistant Superintendent, um, ECGR, Tamara Phoenix as the Administrative Assistant. So the people that were present at the meeting was Melanie Hines, Carol Medell, Dr. Frederick Weaver. It's kind of repeating itself. Okay, so we'll just go past that. So review minutes from previous meeting. They were approved. Uh, Board Book installations and training will begin in June. Board members will receive the paper packet and the Board Book email from July until December. Uh, beginning in January, board members will only receive the email to notify that the agenda is ready for viewing. If needed, more training can be scheduled for board members. The committee agreed that we, we will, eh, tongue tied today. The community, the committee will agree that we will be reviewing the board operating procedures. They would take the sections of the board after each cycle of reviewing to keep down any confusion instead of waiting until the entire, uh, BOP is completed, which is Board Operating Procedures. The committee reviewed and discussed Board Operating Procedures from Section 1.01, 3, and 4 to be taken up with the board approval on April 29th for the next regular scheduled meeting. Committee comments, no comments. Superintendent comments, Dr. Holt had a heartfelt thank you for ending the day like we did. Also thanked Dr. Weaver for sending information about a family matter. She shared that we would have to get back to treating people like family. We have to take care of our own, and if you have any questions, just ask if you don't know. Meeting adjourned at 8:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Board members have comments on the Policy Committee report? I, I'd like to know if someone would like to explain Board Book. Would you, Ms. Walker?
I can.
Please do.
Uh, so Board Book is like a software, um, that right now, when we get all our information, we get it on kind of Google Docs. And Google Docs can be a little complicated to some, including myself. Board Books is strictly for board members where they will upload all of our information, um, our agenda, anything that has to do with our meetings, anything that has to do with the board. It'll tell us committees. It'll have committee notes there. It'll have, uh, all the information we need for whatever topic is on, um, on the agenda. And we can just go to one place, and it's easy, it's user-friendly, and it will help us to be more efficient as a board. Does that?
Yes, thank you, thank you. You know what I like about Board Book, and I was just introduced by Mrs. Walker to Board Book, uh, several weeks ago. You see the paper? Uh, it just, it just keeps coming. And the problem with that is you want to keep it because you want to have it as reference, but it's just really impossible to keep the, the reams of papers that you have. So Board Book will allow us actually to have information that, that goes back. And, uh, for that reason, I'm, I'm very supportive of it. Uh, Finance Committee, Mr. Buckaloo, you have a report. Do you have a report on one Finance Committee meeting or two? Okay, Mr. Buckaloo? Well, before I start, does, does this mean, Ms. Walker, that I'm going to have to give up my stick and clay tablet?
Yeah.
Your what?
Yeah.
You should have big gave that up. No wonder you behind.
In truth, when I came up, became a member of the board, I went out and bought a file cabinet to keep track of all of the paper that, that we're accumulating over, over the time. And we had, uh, we had quite a meeting on April 24th that was so well-attended that we moved from the room we were in to another, uh, room, which barely accommodated the number of people who were there. So bear with me a minute. These are the people who were present. Myself, Ms. Diane Cartwright, Mr. David Cox, Mr. James Crawley, Mr. Charles Hallman, Mr. Don Harris, Dr. Shelley Holt, Ms. Tanya Karpinski, Mr. Brody Killian, Mr. Devin Kling, Bishop Luke McLendon, Mr. Jesse Nelson, Pastor Overman, Ms. Bonnie Perendo, Mr. Tov Pauling, Ms. Yvonne Scott, Ms. Jill Simmons, Mr. Tony Spizak, Ms. Carol Sylvester, Mr. Dale Tremblay, Ms. Shawna Walker, Ms. Cheryl Watson, Mr. Mark Watson, Mr. Kevin Weber. And it was crowded. Uh, minutes from the la, from last year, minutes from the 2017-18 school year were given out for review. Meeting schedule. Discuss meeting schedule. Agree to have meetings every other month in addition, and in, and additional meetings as needed. Summary of problems, including the audit. Discuss problems with past audit and, and why they were happening. Discuss what had been done and is being done to rectify the problems so we can move forward with correct financial audits in the future. And we'll point out to you, uh, that a copy of the full audit, uh, is available to, for anyone to look at should they do so, should they choose to do so, on the district website. So, uh, for transparency's sake, it's there for you to take a look at should you choose to do so. Summary of expenses. Information sheets were given out showing how much time is left for our consultants to help clean up and train in the business office. Bond update. Everything is on track and moving forward with our bond issue. Finance Department updates. The Finance Department needs time to work through the issues, but it is in better shape. The department will be in a good place by July 1 of 2019 to start doing weekly, monthly, quarterly, and annual reports. Budget. The business office is reviewing each building to make sure all budgets are accurate. Title II, Part A, Supporting Effective Instruction. Working with the title, asking for more funds so we can leave our general fund alone. Rolled over 14.7% last year and hoping to do it again this year. That would be our fund equity. Investment report. Information sheet given out showing where our funds are. Moved funds in January from Morgan Stanley to Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, which is where they should be. Dr. Holt stated that we have fixed the problem with MDA, and nothing will be done in MEGS Plus without her signature. City of Wayne, Wayne Westland Community Schools will be sharing the property between Franklin Middle School and the Hype Center. Working with our attorneys on the logistics of that move. Ms. Lyons received the Green Diesel Act grant that the board will be voting on Monday, today. Um, and I will let, uh, a further explanation of that grant, uh, sit until we get to it in the agenda. Um, we need to reach agreement on a budget amendment. Most of the people in this room have a vested interest in us reaching that and reaching it in an accurate way. Without that, we don't move forward on the process of contract negotiations. So when you go home tonight, say a little prayer, uh, for our budget amendment. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Members of the board, comments on the Finance Committee Report, which was gripping. Mr. Buckaloo, thank you. Item 289.19, Review and Approval of Human Resource Items.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I present to you for review and approval, um, the resolution found on page 40 and 41, the Resolution of a Nonrenewal of an Administrator's Contract for Ms. Robin Meeks. She is currently serving as the Director of Resource Management and Program Evaluation.
Thank you. We hear a motion.
Support. Move support.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Is there support?
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Roll call, vote please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. Medell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
Thank you. Under 289.19, Section B is a Resolution for the Nonrenewal of an Administrator's Contract for Victoria O'Reilly. And at this time, a motion is needed, uh, for the board to adjourn to a closed session according to Section 8A to consider the dismissal, suspension, or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against, or to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer, employee, or member of the staff according to the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Moved by, uh, Mrs. Walker, support by Mr. Buckaloo. Roll call, vote please.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Medell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
Ladies and gentlemen, the board has just voted to go into closed session. And what this means is that we're going to ask everyone to leave the room. We will close the door, conduct our closed session business, and once we re-adjourn to an open meeting, we will open the door and ask you to come back in and take your places. So we're going to give you a couple of moments to do that. For your, uh, your courtesy, we hope you had a nice break.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for us to go back into open session.
Motion by Mrs. Walker to return to open session. Is there support?
So moved.
Support by Ms. Hines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We are back in open session. We're at item 289.19 on the agenda. Item B, recommended motion is, uh, the board approve Human Resource Item B as presented. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Item B.
Motion by Dr. Weaver, support.
Take it.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Roll call, vote please. Is there any, is there any discussion beyond that which has occurred?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Uh, Ms. Medell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
Item C on our agenda is Director of Employee Relations, Mr. Kevin Weber.
Item C on our agenda is Director of Employee Relations, Mr. Kevin Weber. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
If you guys want to move forward, we don't, I mean, he's a current employee, it's...
As I can make a motion to accept, uh, Mr. Weber as Director of Employee Relations.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Madell. Ms. Simmons? Do you have any comments?
If you turn to page forty-three in your board packet, you'll see Mr. Weber's, uh, personal data sheet. You can see that he possesses a Bachelor of Science from Western Michigan University in Emotionally Impaired and, uh, Communication. He possesses a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Concordia University. He holds a professional certificate in Secondary Education and Emotional Impairment in Speech, and also a School Administrator, uh, Elementary and Secondary Administrator Certification. Uh, Mr. Weber's, uh, work experience is listed, um, but he is, uh, most recently known as, uh, serving as a special, special education teacher at Wayne Memorial High School, Assistant Principal, and then most recently as the Principal.
Discussion? There's gotta be some for me. You're not the only ones that love Kevin Weber. We love him too. And he does an exceptional job. And frankly, uh, if you look at his background, he's moved up consistently his entire life. This is absolutely nothing new. We need him. We need him in the role that we're asking him to serve in. And even though it's not the board's call, I mean, these calls are made by the superintendent, I agree that he is a great, uh, a great person for that role. And, uh, we know that he'll bring the same enthusiasm and dedication to it that he's brought to everything else, uh, and we wish him great success in his role. And, uh, thank you, Kevin. Thank you for all you do for our school district. Roll call, vote?
Did you want to mention that he will not start that new position until July 1st?
No.
Okay.
He's gonna, he's gonna be at Wayne Memorial through the, uh, end of the school year, and, uh, he'll be on the stage and shaking the hands of the students and right where he's supposed to be, and then his job is going to be bringing new people who want to be part of what, the exciting things that are going on in the Wayne Westland School District, and who better to speak to that than Kevin? So, good job. Roll call, vote?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero? Congratulations.
You have something to say? No, 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 get up there, we're just...
I just wanted to say thank you to the board and Dr. Holt and everyone in this room for your support. Um, it's been a wonderful fifteen years at Wayne Memorial. I look to, therefore, to continue and to serve our community at large now, um, in the employee relations role. And of course, I thank all the parents, um, students, and of course, our staff for your support. So thank you very much.
Best of luck, Kevin. Next item on the agenda is 290.19, which is the Review and Approval of Business Service Items. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am submitting for your review and approval, a recommendation for the purchase of school buses. If you turn to pages forty-five, um, through fifty-five, you will see that, um, we are requesting board approval to purchase five new clean diesel buses. The buses will be purchased in conjunction with the approved DEQ grant for the National Clean Diesel Program, which Mr. Buckaloo mentioned previously during the Finance Committee, um, minutes. These buses will replace one special lift bus with air conditioning and four seventy-eight passenger buses. These buses will be decommissioned to the point that they are no longer roadworthy. New buses must be ordered by April 30th, 2019, which is tomorrow. The new buses must be received no later than August of 2019. All invoice for new buses must be paid for in August of 2019. The total purchase price for replacing the four seventy-eight passenger buses is four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, and, uh, I'm sorry, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. The total purchase price for replacing the one special education bus is one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, for the total of five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. The total cost of the equipment is not to exceed five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and is based on a bid from the MSBO Bus Purchasing Consortium. The DEQ, DEQ Clean Diesel Grant will reimburse the district one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, or twenty-five percent, of the total purchase price for the buses. The purchase will be charged to the 2019-2020 General Fund accounts. So essentially, we would be getting five buses for the cost of four.
Are you good? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support by Mrs. Walker, support by Mrs. Heinz, discussion?
Couple of comments.
Mr. Buckaloo?
When they say that the buses are not to be roadworthy, they're talking about drilling a hole through the engine, aren't they? And we also have the option of scrapping those buses, and we might actually, uh, as I read in here, realize as much as five thousand dollars in, in scrap value for those, those buses. Now, it's a great deal for us. Those are buses that most likely we would need to replace anyway, because they're at the end of their lifespan. And the kindness of the grant is based on the idea that we're taking polluting vehicles off the road and replacing them with cleaner vehicles. So it's a win-win, and, uh, it's a great, great deal for the school district.
Yeah, buy four, get one free. I love it. Roll call, vote?
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
Item 291.19, Revisions to the Board Operating Procedures. Several, uh, meetings ago, we had a, uh, kind of a, I don't know what to call it. We've got another one. Uh, we're, what we're going to be doing is changing a lot of codes and what have you in our policy. It is not going to be exciting. But, uh, on Item A. Pardon me?
Mr. President, do we have to do them all individually?
Uh, as I understood it, we do have to do them individually.
That's my understanding. Um, I'm gonna turn to, uh, Ms. Phoenix.
Yeah.
Remember, I'm the arbitrary author.
Yeah, yes.
Yes. You do. But you don't, you don't have to sit here and read everything.
We don't have to read the whole thing. We can just say, A, 1.1.
A, do I hear?
Everything that's being changed is in red, so that it's easy for you to see.
Uh, do I hear a motion on 291.19A?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Walker, support by Ms., Dr. Weaver. Is there any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
Thank you. Section B, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mrs. Heinz, supported by Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
This particular item deals with putting items on the agenda, and as a matter of practice, administration pretty much determines what the agenda for this board is going to be. There is a vehicle through which board members can address that, but it very seldom happens. And even when a proposal is made, it's even more rare that it's adopted. So I'm kind of taking a little bit of umbrage to the idea that this particular item would make it even more difficult for someone other than, uh, a superintendent to, uh, to say what the agenda should be. I would like, uh, to keep it as is if we can't move it in the other direction. So I'm, I cannot see making it more difficult for board members to put items on the agenda.
Mrs. Walker?
Mr. Buckaloo, it really didn't change. Um, the only thing that was added was that in case of impasse, that it was, as long as you follow the procedure, you can get it on, just don't wait till the last minute.
Yes, and when I see making it into a study session, I see that it's something that won't come to the board that month.
Okay.
Is there other discussion?
Quick question with the study, I'm kind of confused with the study session. Can you explain that, your last time with the study session?
Well, if some, if it reaches impasse, the board president and superintendent can't agree, it then is referred to, according to this statement, as I interpret it, uh, coming out of your committee, is that, uh, it'll be referred to a study session.
Okay.
And so, let's, let's say we're talking about something we want on the agenda for next month. Disagreement? Study session, it won't be on the agenda next month. Might get on the agenda the following month, or the month after, or it might not get on the agenda at all. But in any event, what it does is it puts, uh, an additional hurdle in the way of someone other than, uh, an administration, uh, determining what the board agenda will be, our board agenda. And, and I have to, I have to say, you know, I agree most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, that agenda pretty much needs to be dictated by administration. But on those few cases where someone on the board has a concern, uh, we shouldn't be making it more difficult for that to come before the board. And that's what I see this doing.
Mrs. Heinz, supported by, by yourself.
To strike out the red and leave it as is?
Why don't you just go ahead and vote on the way it's written, and if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it goes back to the committee.
Well, I, I want to, I want to speak on it too, um, if there's no other conversation. The superintendent and I are frequently at impasse. But there's work to be done, and we do the work. And if we disagree on something, we will deal with it. And I have the ability, as a matter of fact, I have the right, I'm the last one to talk at the end of this meeting. And I feel confident if I have something to say, I will overcome my shyness, and I'll say it. And I think what this does is, and I'm not looking at it if just I am the president, this allows the president and the superintendent not to reach an agreement, because they can just have a study session, so that six other people have to be in a room when otherwise they wouldn't, if the people were just, just destined to work it out. And, uh, I agree with Mrs. Walker. I don't need these, this language here. I think we could just continue business the way we've done, and if we have a disagreement, we'll deal with it. And, uh, I'm sure s, future presidents would too. Dr. Weaver?
Yes. I see it a little bit differently than my esteemed colleague does. I see this as actually a protection for board members, because it doesn't leave it with the superintendent and the president of the board. If a member of this board wants something on the agenda, and the two cannot agree that it's going on the agenda, then the protection is, is that the board member gets an opportunity to speak to the other board members, uh, to, uh, make a decision, uh, as to whether it should be on the committee. So I don't necessarily see it as a hurdle, I see it as a protection for a certain board member to make sure that their thought gets a fair hearing.
Comments on that?
No.
My, my sentiment about that is that there is a facility for a board member to, uh, elicit support from two other board members and have something placed on the agenda. And that will allow, what this does in essence is that it allows one board member to set a study session, because they want to talk about something. It is, and if I'm wrong about that, I'm certainly willing to look at the other side of it. In any event, is there any, uh, is there any need that this has to be dealt with tonight? Maybe there is more discussion that we need to have on this, but...
We have a motion.
We have a motion, we have support, and that roll call vote?
Ms. Walker?
No.
Mr. Buckaloo?
No.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, no. Ms. Madell?
No.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, and one.
Um, next, Section C, uh, is only a change of the policy number as it relates to the section with the, uh, added words with superintendent and board president approval. So what this says is no item can be placed on the agenda less than seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting, absent special circumstances, with superintendent and president approval. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Heinz, support by Walker. Discussion? I'm sorry, Madell. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote?
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Six zero.
Section D, Recommended, uh, 1.1.4C.1 will now be Policy 1000.02. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support by Heinz. Roll call, vote?
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
E, 1.1.4E.1 point will now be Policy Number 1000.02.
So moved, to support.
Moved by Madell, support by Walker. Roll call, vote?
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
Subsection F, 1.1.5D, as in Delta, will now be Policy 1000.02. Is there a motion?
Support.
Moved by Madell, support by Walker. Roll call, vote?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
G, 1.1.5 will now be known as Policy Number 1000.02. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support by?
Support.
Walker. Roll call, vote?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
H, 1.3 Alpha will now be Policy 1000.02. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, to support.
Madell, support by Walker. Roll call, vote?
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Does the record show six zero?
This is the kind of thing I get at impasse about. Section L, 1.3.2C, as in Charlie. The delegations of more than five persons should appoint one person to present their views before the board, and the new wording will be a time limit of three minutes will be enforced. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Walker, support by Madell. Roll call vote.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
But the record shows six, zero.
J is 1.3.2-Delta. The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited to speak shall be limited to two thirty-minute sections, and if necessary, a special meeting will be scheduled to discuss topics. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Medel, support?
Support.
Support by Weaver, is there discussion? Is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
But the record shows six, zero.
Item K, 1.3.3, Charlie, four. The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited to speak shall be limited to two thirty-minute sections. The time limit of three minutes will be enforced.
So moved.
Moved by Medel, support?
Second.
Mr. Buckaloo? Nice to hear from you, Mr. Buckaloo. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
But the record shows six, zero.
Thank you very much. Item number 292.19 on the agenda is the long-awaited Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Medel?
In front of each of you is a monthly expense report for the months from beginning on March first to March thirty-first, as required by federal law. We need a motion to accept the Head Start Monthly Report as provided.
I move that we accept Mrs. Medel's report.
Motion by Walker, support?
I'll support it.
Is there support?
I'll support it.
Support by Ms. Medel? Is there discussion? Hearing no discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
But the record shows six, zero.
Thank you. Item 293.19 is a resolution in support of Governor Whitmer's budget proposal. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. President. On pages fifty-five and fifty-six of your Board Agenda packet, you will find the School Board Resolution in support of Governor Whitmer's budget proposal. Mr. President, do you want me to read it?
I do not.
Okay. Because I did not want to read that.
Thank you for asking.
All right, so I just put that on...
Everyone has this proposal in front of them. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Walker?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver? Discussion?
Other than to say it will be available if anybody wants to come into
Absolutely.
administrative offices and see what the resolution says.
We're so happy to give it to you. And roll call vote, please.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
But the record shows six, zero.
294.19 is a resolution in support of adequately funding Michigan schools. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. President. On pages fifty-eight and fifty-nine of your Board Pa- or I'm sorry, fifty-seven and fifty-eight of your Board packet, you find the resolution in support of adequately funding Michigan schools. I'm not going to read this, but what I will say is that in my experience in schools, the state of Michigan has a lot of work to do with how we adequately fund our schools, period. More importantly, advocating on the local, state, and national level for districts like ours that have been through unimaginable challenges with our funding and between Proposal A, the headley language, I mean, going all the way back, we must be at the table, because if you're not at the table, you are definitely on the menu, and this resolution here definitely puts us at the table for the conversations about funding in Michigan. And I am telling our story everywhere I can about what's happened here in Wayne Westland, and how we must continue to move the needle on fully funding our schools.
Thank you.
Move to support.
Motion by Walker, support?
Support.
Mr. Buckaloo? Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Sir?
Is this, is this the plan to put money where money is needed, as opposed to spreading it equally across districts? Or have I got it confused with something else?
No, I think this is just a...
The adequacy study?
Proposal A passed in nineteen ninety-four. That's how long it's been since they revisited this funding mechanism.
Finlay destruction.
But this would allow us to put money into projects where it's needed, maybe in the districts where it's more needed, and spend less in areas where it's not quite so needed. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes and no.
You're gonna make us read it, aren't you?
Yes and no. So, what it is, it's saying that we, as a board, support the findings of the School Finance Research Collaborative, and that we, as a board, as a school district and board team, want to move forward with adequately funding our schools, pretty much by any means necessary. It doesn't really get into the specifics of where to put the money. It's basically saying, we need to follow the recommendations of the board, and this board supports the recommendations of the School Adequacy Board.
Then it's equitable funding as opposed to equal funding?
Exactly. Based on need.
And that's something longer to...
How could we not? We've been crying for funding since nineteen seventy-eight. Really, this is, school districts should not have had to do what we have had to do to fund what neighboring districts had the funding to do. So, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Absolutely.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
But the record shows six, zero.
Thank you. 295.19 is the superintendent's report. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by just giving a huge thank you to our special education team and to those who have supported our students. In all their areas of need, we saw three amazing young men here today. And knowing a couple of those stories personally, they definitely worked hard to achieve what they are achieving, and we cannot forget about any of our children. I do want to comment on the, and thank the secondary redesign team. That is a team of consummate professionals who really did come together and think about what's in the best interest of all children. And I love what Nimmer Guth was saying around the sense of belonging, and we have to reincorporate a sense of belonging here in Wayne Westland with our children, with our families, with everyone in our community, and in bridging those gaps with one another, so that we can fully educate our children. I also want to comment on the fact that as we look at the student achievement data, and those who know me know that I'm not as big on one day, one test, what one child does, but that is the current, the current way that our state measures our schools. Right or wrong, it's the business we're in, it's the business we got into, and, you know, we can definitely get in another business if we want, but this is our business. That being said, we have to redefine success as those things that matter most to our children and our community. At the end of the day, we have to look at what is the product that we are producing at the end of thirteen years here in Wayne Westland. And our kids, after thirteen years here in Wayne Westland, they must be able to minimally meet the standards of, you know, the SAT or the M-Step. They need to be able to be literate. They need to meet the expectations that have been put out in this draft version of a profile of a graduate. And so I am very thankful to our team for putting that, moving that forward, and to you, Mr. Weber. Thank you for six years of service at Wayne Memorial High School. That is no easy feat, and I'm so thankful, on a personal and professional level, for what you've done for our kids. And I'm very excited to bring you onboard. The work you did when you were here was amazing, and we need that to continue. We need great teachers. The best teachers. The best food service workers. I need the best, because excellence is my expectation, and I know you'll bring that. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We've reached the portion of the meeting that will allow citizens to come up and comment on non-agenda items. Are there any citizens that would like to address the board on any issue at all? How kind of you, thank you. Next item is review and recommendations of the Board of Education. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you. I also appreciate the secondary redesign presentation and look forward to its implications and how it's going to improve our school district. Some questions have been asked. Why are you the old man at the end of the counter that always has something to say? And no other board members have anything to say. And I guess that question is better asked by or answered by the other board members. But I do want to say one thing tonight. Several months ago, I was, or received a call from our board president that he was initiating an investigation into allegations from the superintendent that I have been racist and acted in racist ways toward her. The board president, not me, initiated this investigation. I met with our board attorney, Mr. Bob Schindler, to discuss the allegations and received a letter, as the other board members did, that Superintendent Holt refused to speak to the attorney or to answer any questions that the attorney had concerning this board investigation. Now, where I come from, if you have a complaint and can prove it, you make your case. And if you can't, then you need to shut up about it. And I think that...
Are you serious right now?
I think that this is my time.
This is his turn.
I think that the superintendent should answer to this allegation or not speak of it again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yeah. Not often, I don't know what to say. So, as a board...
Could you overcome?
I'll overcome it. As a board, as educators, we get to celebrate a lot of good things that our students do. Recently, we had a basketball team that made the final four. We had a wrestling team that made the final four. We had a percussion section over at Wayne High that placed tenth in the nation. And those are all things that are worthy of celebrating, but I can't imagine celebrating anything more heartfully than the celebration that we had this evening for Timothy and Lucan and Joshua, as they represented us so well in the SICAN program. That is really a special thing. We educate all of the children that walk through our doors, and I'm very, very proud that they're Wayne Westland students. This past weekend, Mrs. Medel and I were in Lansing. We were joined by Dr. Holt, and the purpose of that was a two-day workshop on systematic reconfiguration. That's a kind of an overall plan for how you might, as a school district, get things done and keeping, keep them rolling. And I couldn't help but think during the presentation today that systematic reconfiguration is exactly the kind of thing that the board needs to be aware of as we try to support things like the secondary redesign program. So that was the third and final weekend of systemic reconfiguration. It's over for Mrs. Medel and I. However, in August, on the sixth, seventh, and eighth, they're going to have a review of that program. Though it's not totally over for us.
You should be sound like I died.
Well, it won't be too far down the road.
I'm sorry to hear that.
We are the older people.
See, this is what happens when you go past nine o'clock.
Anyway, the invitation is there for all of our board members. If they wanted to attend one, or two, or all three of those workshops in Lansing on systemic reconfiguration. And I would encourage every one of our board members to take advantage of that, if their schedule possibly will permit that. With respect to the secondary redesign, I pretty much said what I wanted to say earlier. I'll just add this. It's thoughtful, it's transformative, and I think it comes complete with the kind of support that not only our students, but our staff needs. It has a chance to succeed. So many initiatives that we've tried over the years have been one-and-done kinds of things. A waste of our time, a waste of any money that we involve in those projects. This is not, this doesn't appear to be that. If we get behind it, stay behind it, if we commit the kind of resources to it that it really requires, it's going to change the way we do business in this district in a great way. And it'll have benefits, not just to our students, but to the overall enrollment of this school district. People are going to see what we're doing with secondary redesign, and they're going to say, you know, Wayne Westland, once again, is what it used to be. It's a watchtower, it's a lighthouse district. That's what we used to be known as back in the day. People came from all over the country to see what was going on in Wayne Westland. And we can do that once again. And I think secondary redesign is the vehicle through which we can accomplish a great deal of that. When I showed up today, I had plans to read to you the minutes from two finance committee meetings. Even though I requested the minutes from the March twenty-fifth meeting be on the agenda today, somehow it didn't get placed on the agenda. So in a sense of transparency, I hope that I have an opportunity to present that, the minutes of that meeting to you at the next one's meeting. And that's all I have for tonight.
I look forward to hearing that. Mrs. Walker?
Thank you. First of all, let me just say, let me do this. Kevin, congratulations. I know you that you'll do really well. Second of all, let me say that the amount of disrespect that has been going on in this community, on this board, is just unbelievable. As professionals, we might not always like each other, we might not always get along, I might not even want to break bread with you, but I will respect you for the position that you hold and the role that you sit in. When a person feels that they have been victimized, no matter what it is, they have a right to handle that feeling the way... You can't tell a person how they feel, or how they should handle that. If a person has a right to handle what they feel has happened to them the way that they want to, at the time that they want to, you wouldn't go tell a person that got mugged on the street that you got mugged and you did not go or reported or do what you were supposed to do. If that person didn't feel like they were ready to do it, they didn't have to do it. They could do it when they're ready to do it. As board members, we need to find an equal ground on how we are going to be respectful to each other, and whoever sits in this superintendent's seat deserves to have the respect, as long as they're there. If we don't respect them, why is she here, or whoever's there? This here is out of control, and something needs to be done, and that's all I got to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinz?
Take a deep breath. So I'd like to thank the pledge kids that came today. I'd like to thank the staff of the secondary redesign. I'm so getting emotional, because this is really hurting the district. You know, I care about these kids, we all care about these kids. Ma'am, Kevin Weber, you have been so fabulous in Wayne Warrior. You know I'm like a zebra rocket, even though my son go to Claire's. I love Wayne Warrior Rocket.
She don't know where her loyalty's at.
I'm just saying. But you guys did the best job. And, you know, like Shawna said, it's been a level of disrespect that's just outrageous. There's even, you know, some laws that could have been broken, I'm just saying. And you've even said some racially discriminating things this weekend at the conference.
Dress your comments to the chair.
Okay. I'm just saying, like, when we're in the district, I did a tour, I went to twenty-two schools in two days. I still have a couple more I'm visiting, but as a board member, we don't really get to go into the schools to see what's happening. I like to talk to people, I like to hear everybody, I like to hear what's going on. You know, how's it going with the culture, climate coach? I've seen a lot of things in those two days. I got to see how the buildings are, and I feel sorry for the buildings that don't have the air conditioning. I really, I'm heartfelt, because as a board, we don't see that. And then with the new construction going on, with the new bond that's coming in place. But this community has changed over the last twenty years. I was surprised to see the amount of diversity in the classroom. It is not the old Wayne Westland. And I really applaud all of you to come to take care of our children. You treat our kids like families. When I was in the classroom, the teachers hugged the kids, they loved them, and I just seen so much energy and so much dedication. seen so much energy and so much dedication, and, you know, we're trying to move forward. We have some wonderful things coming up. We're redoing the district, we have district redesigns, and this lady has worked really hard to bring everyone together, and you guys put a lot of time, even with the bond. I seen you guys out knocking on doors in the neighborhoods, going to churches and community events to get this going. So I really hate to see what's happening with this board. And another thing that I, I learned, I went to a conference, the Michigan Association of School Boards, and as a board member, like, we just see numbers, but it doesn't make sense. So I was able to take a class, and it was so important, talking about achievement, and it was a class about assessments and practices at work. And one of the studies that was, really surprised me, is they had a study by our children in the third grade, how, how many minutes it takes for them to test, so for the MCAT, three-hundred and seventy-five minutes. That's the same amount of time a third grader spends taking a test. How can we expect our children to pass these tests if they're taking the same amount that somebody's going for their law exam? And they were talking about how punitive it is in Michigan. They're always looking at numbers, and looking at the scores, it's set to fail our children, and it really surprised me. And then they gave us samples, examples of the test? They were totally different. As a grown-up, I'm like, oh my gosh, how can a third grader even do this test and sit around with the time? So I really applaud you guys for the hard work that you're doing, but, I mean, I'm a real active person, but they need to really, Lansing has to come down, because they're making these tests way too high, and with the staff, you guys spend more time teaching the kids about tests, and they're missing out on social studies and science, so, I mean, we have to really come together and figure out a plan to help them bring it down just a tad bit, because these stakes are way too high, and you can't really measure a child on a test score, because not everybody's good at taking tests. And I do have two more schools I'm going to, because I did miss a couple, I'm gonna try to swing back, I gotta hit Hamilton and Elliott, and I'm coming back to Hoover, because I had two days, it's hard to get all them schools, it's a lot of schools. But thank you for opening it up, and like, anytime you ever need anything, I'm here, just call me, you need something, that's why I'm here, to kind of see how we can help. And I'd like to end it at that.
Thank you, Melody. Mrs. Medel?
First of all, I'd like to thank Jenny Johnson and the other staff members that work in her department for getting so much information out on Facebook. She has, and, and the rest of the staff have done a fabulous job of getting the information as quickly as possible, as it happens in the classroom and the buildings, out to the public via our Facebook page, which some of us then pick up and, and put on our Facebook pages to make it out there even more, because there are great things going on in this school district. Again, another shout-out to John Glenn for their play Footloose, Kids Get a Great Job. In a couple of months, I was here talking about Sister Act and said, you know, yeah, it won't be Whoopi Goldberg, but maybe somebody will rise to the occasion and be as good as Whoopi, and they did it. That was the best I've seen out of those kids, and their, their heart was in their performance, and you could see it. They were absolutely wonderful. They knocked it out of the park, so kudos to, to Wayne High's theatrical program and Sister Act. I'd like to congratulate our social studies students from the middle schools who participated in their project presentations, I think it was in Saginaw is where they went, and displayed their work there. Also, congratulations to the, the redesign team. That was a lot of time and effort that went into that, and you could tell by the quality of the presentation and the materials coming out. We are moving in the right direction. We've needed to move in this direction for a while now, and it's now imperative that we look at a new direction for educating our kids. Thank you to everybody who has donated to our Family Resource Center. Without those donations, our, their job is just a little harder, so when you're thinking about donations and that to the school district, please consider the EFC.